Okay, good evening and welcome to the joint study session between the city of Ellensburg and the Kidittas County Commissioners.
Yeah, on behalf of Board of County Commissioners, we'll call our side of the meeting order. Vice Chair Oshadis is not here tonight, so as Vice Chair I will be chairing our side of the House.
Okay, and if anybody hasn't seen, on the backside of this piece of paper is our agenda, and we'll be following the agenda there. So the first item up is Item 2A, which is under economic.
Mayor, did you want to add an item to the end of the meeting?
Oh, yeah, so the thought was is under seven or a new seven is to allow for the introduction or the discussion of additional topics or updates and really maybe set the stage for future meetings if we need to. We're conducting these meetings roughly once every year, and we just want to make sure that we're not leaving things on the table. So I'm suggesting that as a potential amendment to the agenda if everybody is agreeable.
We're agreeable on our side, we're casual.
Okay.
What did you say?
Okay, so we're actually adding an Item 7, which will be updates or topics not covered, so the German will be Item 8. So now we will do economic development partnership update, and 2A is some history and update.
Yeah, so I will open this one up, start with a little bit of a yarn, take everybody back. This process, economic development, is actually decades in the making. Some of you may have heard my tired old stories, but I'm going to tell them again anyway tonight. In many ways, our county and Ellensburg included have, I'll say, have done a good job of snatching defeat and doing the job of victory over the years when it comes to economic development. Many know that we used to have a port district here, which is the largest tool in the economic toolbox. We're the only county to ever disband our own port district. We are one of six in now to not have one. We also had the opportunity at one time to be the license operator, our PUD, of a Columbia River Dam, and declined to do that, felt like it was not in our best interest, and Grant County said, "Thanks, we'll take two." And to this day, we have a lot of folks who bypass our county on the way to Grant County and other places with competitive power and very, very participatory government agencies helping to deal with critical issues like infrastructure. However, from a beneficial standpoint, we do have an institute of higher education here in the university. When Ellensburg did not get the state capital in 1889, our consolation prize was a penitentiary or a university. Thank God we got a university, because a university is a magnet for business, it is a magnet for innovation, and it is a workforce powerhouse. All of these ingredients, both good and bad, have brought us to where we are today. Our current road really started in terms of trying to change these outcomes right around the beginning, middle of COVID with a conversation that former Mayor Tab and I had, Bruce Tab, regarding all of the splits and issues going on between various factions, whether or not you were in COVID, out of COVID, whether or not you were an R or D, whether or not. We still have a desire in this area, every single one of us, to attain opportunity, to make sure that we can provide for our families, and we have an area that has the ability for our children to be raised here and continue the generational continuance of our families and earn a good wage. Even today, we are 20% from an area median income standpoint behind the state average. We're even below the national average. So it is imperative that we change this. And out of that discussion and a lot more, we, meaning the county and the city, both contributed some of our SLR funds, the ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan Act funds, towards the production and development of a countywide economic development plan built on several different goals, five to be specific. And the plan was funded by the city and the county, but our smaller cities, those of South Cleon, Cleon, Roslyn, and the city of Kidittas, all said, "We don't want another plan that's going to sit on the shelf. We want to make sure that this thing moves forward. We can't pay for it, we don't have the resources." And out of that agreement, we said, "We'll pay for it, we're all going to abide by the outcomes, we are all going to support this." And through that, this plan and the work has continued to move forward. We are now showing some results of that, and I'm now going to turn it over to Dr. Welpark from CWU to talk about our wins in the present, and then City Manager Heidi Bergerson Way will talk about the future.
Great, thank you, Corey, and I so appreciate being invited to this meeting to talk about this opportunity that we have in front of us. And what I appreciate most importantly about this is that we have the opportunity to come together to proactively create our future rather than having the future happen to us, and that's a large part of the plan. There are several initiatives that Central is included in the Economic Development Strategic Plan, and that was part of the very collaborative process we used to participate in the development of the plan, so I'll talk about some of the ways in which we're moving those initiatives forward. So I'll start with a few that really relate to creating the workforce-ready programs that are aligned with the business and industry that we're trying to attract or that are here. The first and biggest one is called the Adaptive University Initiative, something that we launched this last fall, to build off of the really great strengths we have as an institution, but then also to transform what we're doing in order to build our capacity to continuously evolve our programs, our curriculum, to make sure we're meeting the needs of business and industry of today and of tomorrow. Right now, that initiative has a steering committee that's been attached to it, there's over 30 proposals that have come in from the university community about things that we could do differently to meet the needs of the county and the region. I'll give you a couple of examples, and some of these are actually written into the strategic plan. One of them is to expand service learning opportunities for our students, so that our students can go out and work with governmental agencies, non-governmental agencies, to build students' learning, but then also to serve the community. We're rethinking internships, which is one of the most important things students do to get jobs, we know that, but we're thinking about those internships on a four-year process, so that by the time they get to their third or fourth year and they do their internship, we've actually developed the skills and capacities that they need, so that when they go into a business or industry, the work they do is meaningful for both the business and industry and the student. We're doing a lot of leadership development, which is one of the things that we know our students have asked for, but that's also part of what has been asked for internally. We're rethinking our foundational curriculum, our general education curriculum, to make certain that it is focused on particular skills and competencies that are needed. And we've also launched a conversation about three-year degrees. You all know most college degrees are four-year degrees, we're not talking about shrinking four years into three years. There is actually a national movement now to create programs that are professional and vocational that actually only take three years, and that is one of the initiatives that we will be focused on. We're also looking at developing more public and private partnerships. Many of you were here last Tuesday for the event called Forging the Future, a regional collaboration for innovation and growth. This is a collaboration between Central and the county that is dedicated to advancing innovation, industry, and economic growth in not just Kidittas County, but all of Central Washington. We've been working closely with the Commissioners, received Department of Commerce grants, and we hired a consultant who will work with us to build a vision for what old heat could be in terms of an architectural rendering, but then also the business and industry partnerships that could come in there and act as a hub for technology innovation and transfer. That would be very new for us. To attract business and industry to this region, we have to make certain that we have the credentials of the programs and skills that we are developing at Central, but then also with our community colleges, there were a couple of community colleges at this event, to make certain that we're meeting the needs of business and industry. The other thing we hear very often in the central part of the state from students and their families is, "Why should I get a bachelor's degree? There's no jobs here that require a bachelor's degree." We need to invite the business and industry into this region and bring those kinds of jobs here. A couple of initiatives in the College of Business that we've been working on for a while, we have a set of stackable certificates in Agribusiness that was launched two years ago. Those certificates include management, marketing, technology, data management, human resources. Somebody who's already got a job and is working that wants to upskill in the area of human resources can go in and complete that certificate and advance their work in the agribusiness field where they are. Those certificates also stack into a major, so our students actually can do the entire program and graduate with a bachelor's degree in agribusiness. We also just launched a Master of Business Administration, that's new for us at Central. The foundation of our MBA program is ethical leadership, sustainability, and solving real-world problems, working within business and industry. It is a hybrid model that can be taken fully online or in face-to-face. Some of the core courses include systems thinking, strategic leadership, analytics, and data-driven decision-making, talent development, and courses in functional areas like accounting, marketing, supply chain management. We hope to launch the first cohort this fall of our MBA program. I'll highlight one final initiative that is very much written into the strategic plan and is central to our role in partnering with the region, and that is a focus on expanding mental health facilities and support for people in the region, not just our students and our faculty and staff. So we have a partnership with Comprehensive Healthcare, which is a nonprofit. They provided Central with grant funding to hire two new mental health counselors to expand our master's degree in counseling. We actually lost that program because we lost the faculty about three years ago. This has given us the opportunity to hire faculty back. We've already hired one, the second faculty will start this fall. We've also requested design funding to take down our psychology building and build a new mental and behavioral health. One of your city council members can tell you a whole lot more about that project than I can. We did not get the design funding in this biennium, we hope we will get it in the next biennium. The idea is to actually build a facility that allows Comprehensive Health or some other facility to come in and actually do mental health counseling in that facility for the city, the county, and the region. We also were awarded funding from the Kidittas County Public Health Department from the 1/10th of 1% Mental Health and Chemical Dependency Fund. These funds are used to expand our community clinic services for youth. Specifically, we've provided free counseling services for children and adolescents ages 12 to 17 who live in Kidittas County. These services include group therapy, individual therapy, and family therapy. Lots of those things are written into the strategic plan, so we're very honored to be a part of this, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have questions.
Well, it's also my honor to be with this team. We've been doing road shows to all of the other council chambers in the county over the last few years and working together, and it was intentional to have our five goals up on the screen, because really what's been central to all our work is collaboration, and I hope you'll see that through our next piece. So what we understand we need to do from all of this work and from the outset, we said we have to do things differently. And as Corey mentioned, as Fisher Wright, excuse me, mentioned, that we don't want a plan that sits on the shelf. And so from early on, we asked all our partners to commit to doing the work together. And we're looking for how can we continue to do this work and continue to formalize the partnerships that we built, to continue to work together, and continue to evolve how we do economic development, especially in this county and in Central Washington. So what you're seeing on the screen, and then there are copies in front of you and semesters at the back table, is a preview of some work that's been formulated by a series of task forces really over the past year, but primarily just the past few months here. What's happened in the last couple of years since the plan has been adopted by all of our jurisdictions is we've been working on, again, making sure we understand roles and responsibilities and how we work together, so we don't have people stepping, one organization stepping on the other's toes. One of the issues that came out of that was an opportunity to look at, we need more capacity, and we need more capacity countywide. And we had our center fuse, our Ellensburg Business Development Authority, that was really centered on Ellensburg specific, and we knew we needed broader services. And so really, over the course of a year and just ending this last year, worked through a process to dissolve that entity and start moving those services into other entities and trying to look at how we can continue to evolve and continue to expand those services and work better together. And so this is that next iteration, what you're seeing in front of you, the Conference of Governments, again, made up of two members, elected officials from each of our municipalities and the county that have been core to this work and really the guiding stakeholder group from the very beginning, looking at how we can expand their work and their role into creating some accountability for the work that we're doing together with economic development. The blue box you see on the screen is really our economic development partners, and this is the entity that, these are the people that do the work. Our elected officials are great, they're likely not out there talking with businesses and doing the day-to-day work that our staff in our agencies do. And so what we're looking at is putting together a group that meets on a regular basis, and from that, actually having a nexus to a county or actually a conference of governments employee, and that would actually coordinate the work of those doers across the county. And helping make sure that we have the ability to communicate and collaborate, making sure we're working together, that people who, the downtown associations, know what the cities are doing and what the counties are doing in Central Washington, so always looking for opportunities to align the things that we're doing. We know that we don't live in a vacuum, and we need to continue to work together. So the idea would be that this is established by an interlocal agreement, and then we actually, this group would be organized by an economic development director. There's the ability to sort of grow the organization, and what you're going to see off onto the right, BCS, is the Central Washington University's Business and Community Services, looking as support for the work that we do and additional consultants over time. So this will actually be presented to the Conference of Governments at their main meeting. We have another group of task force members, which are made up of our downtown association representatives, city representatives, county representatives, Chamber of Commerce as well, and Central Washington University. We all do work, we all do economic development, and making sure we're working on this, you know, again, we have different roles and responsibilities, but we're working together. We also look to add, what do we need in the future? We need to make sure that what we're doing is business-driven, that we have business partners, and so looking for how we can expand the work of business, education, government, and our nonprofits as we move forward. So again, this is the next iteration of evolution of an economic development ecosystem in our county. You'll be hearing more of this, but we thought this would be the appropriate opportunity to talk to you all about this. And if you have feedback or questions, making sure you talk with your representatives for the Conference of Governments to continue to weigh in and your staff as well.
So is there any questions regarding the economic development partnership update? And just a reminder, you'll have to speak into your mics, otherwise I think it picked up, and this is being broadcast.
My question is, paying for the economic development director, is that the .09 fund?
That would be correct.
We got to do this, right?
That is compliant with state law and the use of that funding, so it's directly economic development related.
Yeah, absolutely right.
And they're an employee of the county, or?
They would have a contractual relationship with COG as an organization to be administered by the county. But it's not a county employee, I want to be clear about that. As soon as we start assigning this to one party in this whole thing, COG as a group is a board that would, yeah, manage performance.
And I would say, one of the challenges that we've had over time is the city actually hired an arts and economic development manager, and she's been helping Kelly Vandenberg, who's been amazing and has been supporting this work, but there's always this perception when we're doing something from the city, that this is a city of Ellensburg thing, or this is a city, and we want this to be really a table that everyone has a seat at, that we can continue to work together. And so that has been really important, and the county's .09 funds really are the only directly, direct funds that are intended for economic development. And so I appreciate the consideration for doing something like this, to expand our capacity.
Can you guys frame up just for the audience here, an overall duration or schedule that is assumed with this program, and if there's a critical milestone, and what does that milestone look like, or deliverables that we're trying to look at? So just understand if this is a two-years, this is a five-years, this is a 10-year, paint that picture.
This, actually, we are looking to get this formalized and official by October of this year through the Conference of Governments. We want to get this off the ground. Our development plan is about three years old now, it's time to start making some progress. The progress that has been made is substantial compared to years of, like, where we've been, you know, simply having this vision now around a landmark building on University Way in a completely different fashion from anything the university has done, and frankly, that's been seen across the state. I mean, that's a statement in and of itself, but that can't stop there, this has to continue. So this, we are looking at by October to have this off the ground, and from there, we anticipate that group will be putting together some program work plans in order to fulfill the elements of the economic plan. But this particular individual, whoever fills this spot, is going to have a lot of work to do and a lot of performance to be measured. And I think it's also key to point out as well, a relationship here that has developed with Central's Business and Community Services, there's a lot of horsepower there, there's a lot of intellectual ability and understanding of business from a corporate model, not necessarily just a pure faculty model, but we have real, real business experience in that organization, and they are taking on our, under the Federal Economic Development Administration, the Community Economic Development, there's a lot of plans here, but it's called the SEDs shorthand, but it is the Community Economic Development Strategic Plan for Yakima and Kidittas Counties. We are partners with Yakima, not by choice, but by statute. Nevertheless, we have a responsibility to get the SEDs put together if we want to obtain a significant amount of federal funding to be eligible for it. Every week, the EDA from a federal level is handing out, some weeks it's over a billion dollars, but we have to have a strong SEDs plan in place. At the university, they have a nationally renowned SEDs expert, Dr. Bill Proboznik, he's read hundreds of these things, he knows what a good one is, he knows what a bad one is, and we want a good one. So bringing that sort of resource from Central into this, and our last SEDs plan, there's a big draft across the top of it because it was never approved. This was back in 2015. It's been years since we've had something like this in place. These are the kind of key measurable steps that I think are going to make this next five years, I think, pretty exciting. So we'll call it, you know, let's check back in in five years, but this, we are anticipating October.
One more question. My understanding is the .09 funding is time-limited, or, I mean, that's not going to...
From state law?
Yeah.
It's, what, we up to 30 years they re-upped it, I believe?
Yeah.
Oh, they re-upped it?
Yeah.
Yeah, originally it was set to expire in 2032.
Okay.
So we've got another vote.
Thanks.
Okay. We'll move on to Item 2B, which is the interlocal agreement and property exchange status date, and this is still under economic development.
Our county partners are going to take the lead on this one?
Evening Commissioners and city council members. Josh Fredrickson, Public Works Director for Kidittas County, wanted to provide an update on the interlocal agreement and the property exchange status that's tied to the interlocal agreement. So in September of 2024, CWU, Kidittas County, and City of Ellensburg entered into an interlocal agreement, looking at opportunities for economic development and mutually beneficial exchange of real properties, that's what it's really tied around. As was mentioned with the Ellensburg Business Development Authority doing business as center fuse, as that was disbanded, there was an opportunity to consolidate and do some things around economic development and really benefiting the community and all our partners on this. And so one of these outcomes was the interlocal agreement, looking at exchange of property. One piece of property is tied to the airport, which the county owns and operates, and so it's an airport hangar the county owns, exchanging property for that with an exchange of property on 18th and Helena, vacant land, and also the EBDA building at the intersection of Airport and Dowards Road. Between the three entities, there's benefit for each one of them, or as beneficial for each one of them to enter into that agreement. And so we're working through those items. One of the items that needed to be done was a boundary line adjustment to adjust the property on 18th and Helena to the proper size for the exchange, for an adequate exchange. That's been going through that process with the city of Ellensburg at this time. And then the next piece is to enter into a sales and, sale and, purchase and sale agreement, thank you, purchase and sale agreement, and that's being drafted with outside council at this point. And so as these pieces come together, we'll be back in front of our respective boards to present those for signature and approval, but that's the status at this point. Do you have anything you want to add?
Excellent, and our intent is to have that to the respective boards by early June.
Questions on the status of that?
Thank you. On the hangar transfer, I understand all that. My question is, has the county initiated a, drafted up a lease for the university to lease the ground under the building, which up to now has been county-owned and not leased?
So the property is, will remain county-owned, so, yeah, so all of the airport out there is county-owned and...
I just was curious about the lease.
Yeah, it's, it's always been a lease for the ground, and the hangar has been on top of that, and it's all wrapped into one piece, one lease, because they, we needed to lease the land underneath it, as well as the hangar. And so that lease will be a separate lease for the land, and that we present it to CWU at the same time as a purchase and sale agreement.
Right, that's what I understood. And the building has been county-owned all along, which means the county hasn't been leasing the ground, they've been using their own ground, as I understand it. The county's not paying itself to use land they own.
We lease it to CWU.
The building.
Yes.
Right, in the future, you'll just lease the land. That was my question, how far, I know this is rolling out, so my question is, has the lease been prepared, drafted, are the rates set, that sort of thing, that's all I care about.
So the rate is a currently adopted rate with the Board of County Commissioners through a resolution from 2022, and that will be finalized and drafted and presented to CWU at the time of the purchase and sale agreement.
Other questions? Okay, let's move to Item 3A, which is an urban growth area discussion, and this is under the comp plan and period update status.
Good afternoon, my name is Chad Beala, CDS Director for Kidittas County. I was just at a joint study session with our Commissioners and planning committee back in March, so I actually like having them, they're pretty informative.
I'm Dan Carlson, City of Ellensburg.
Hang on a second, they're having a hard time hearing, so we'll make more effort on the microphone.
Yeah, there we go. Dan Carlson, Community Development Director for the City of Ellensburg.
Yeah, so what I'll do on the county side is, what you see in the packet that I provided today is just a brief update where we are in our conference plan, periodic update, excuse me, sorry about that. We hired our consultant back in May of 2024, we secured the contracts with Commerce, and we've been moving forward as fast as we can and methodically through the process. Some high-level project objectives as part of this update, due to some changes in state law, due to housing affordability, due to climate and resiliency items that we have to take into consideration. So we're also updating the policies to be current with existing and newly approved statutes with the legislature. Part of the update requires the critical areas regulations, so we have to look at that with regards to best available science. I will make a note that we think we have a settlement with the Yakima Nation as of today or yesterday, with our current processes with the critical areas code, so we're making good progress on that, just to kind of start all over again. But as for the housing, I don't know... But as for the housing, I don't know if you're aware, and I hope you are, you know, we're breaking it down. We're required to break it down into area medium income, 30 to 50%, 50 to 80% and so on, to address affordability. So that's one of the major items in our periodic update that we have to take a look at. So with some specific items, where we're at with our consultant, we've completed our, our first draft of our conference of plan gap analysis to take a look at the past plan and the, and the, and the current statutes and regulations and see where deficient, where we can fix those. Again, the housing needs assessment, we're expected to have our draft. I've reviewed a brief draft this week, but we'll have a final draft or final review by the end of May, along with our land capacity analysis and our critical areas ordinance gap analysis. Those items there, especially the housing needs assessment and land capacity analysis are pretty important. And, and the reason why is it works into our affordability. Basically, you take your, your housing needs analysis, you add that to your land capacity analysis, and then you end up with your type of housing units and what that looks like. And then you incorporate that into your development regulations, zoning changes and so forth. So real quick on that, it goes into bigger details that I'm sure you guys have already experienced in your past years. As a general update, we've kicked this off in November with the kickoff meeting. We had our joint study session in March with our planning commission, Board of County Commissioners. We have started to deal with the Eastern community with an Eastern subarea plan. We have a very active group up there and we are moving down that path. The group themselves meet once a month. We have already held an open house up there, take the first intake of information. You know, we had our consultant and full county staff there to present poster boards and taking all that information where we can start to develop the policies and regulations that will help them guide their growth in the next 20 years. Excuse me, I'm off with a little cold. Our, our public participation plan has been approved. We went through COG on our population projection estimates, which leads us into the area of medium income issues of affordable housing. We started in February, went through COG, all the way through March with final adoption. And now we're on our way to be able to do land capacity analysis and those things. So there was some extension of times with regards to the population projections due to those numbers. Some municipalities wanted to discuss amongst themselves and maybe they can negotiate and trade some, some population and the housing needs, but we didn't get to the, to that stage. So we went ahead and moved forward with adopting the median projection. But what that means is that the cities can still negotiate and talk about their population. It's just that we would have to bring that back forward in front of COG and then back to the Board of County Commissioners to formalize with enabling documents for those changes. So that option is still out there. As for our first open house, we start on May 17th. We are farmer's market time. We're right next to the bull down there. Our consultants will be there. We will have poster boards out. We figure that we're going to do our open houses early on and engagement when public events are happening. So talking to Brad Clark, your Parks Recreation Director, he put us right on the corner, so hopefully we get a lot of traffic. So that'll be good. We will go in the morning till we close up and then we'll head up to Clealum for the senior center and finish the night up with an open house on 5:00 to 7:00 PM. So, and then we'll move forward from there. Our public survey, our Survey Monkey for questions on how people want to foresee the growth in the next 20 years, after my conference call today has gone live this afternoon. So I can send that information out to Dan and he can get that to everybody. So there's a series of questions that we will entertain answers to and our consultant and us will review those and take those into consideration for the public involvement and how we develop our policies. We have a QR code that links you to that. We also have a QR code that links us to our, our comprehensive plan webpage that, as we, explains the process, the engagement, and eventually has documents for review and so forth. So we're pretty accessible. Our goal is to be as accessible as we can to the public because that's what the plan process is all about. It's about public information, public input, public participation, and so that we can move forward with a good document. I just want to end with this in some of the previous discussions is that, that's the problem that I've seen in my experience being in Kititas County is having a comprehensive plan that doesn't have action items. It goes into the economic development plan where you just have a set of policies and you just sit there and look at them. So one of our discussion, big discussion points with our consultants was, is when we start to develop these policies, how do we incorporate the action item in there so that we just not, that's a policy. It says I can do it, maybe it says I can't. So this is some of our goals. If you have any questions, if you form them later on, I'm right across the street.
My update will be very brief. So we're not as far along as the county is in the, in the periodic update process, but Chad did a good job of covering, we, we have those same kinds of requirements under the, under the GMA to address population and housing and climate and those kind of things. And to do a robust public participation program. We're in the process right now of, of finalizing our contract with a consultant team to help us through this periodic update. That contract should be coming to council on the 19th. After that, we'll be finishing up the public participation plan and bringing that forward and launching that as quick as possible with some of those kickoff activities like visiting surveys and periodic update kickoff, open house, those kinds of things. That's where we are.
I too will make this brief. So as Chad said, this is for Dan. Chad mentioned that the county has, had gone through the process of evaluating the population forecasts that are created by the Office of Financial Management, OFM, and the medium scenario was chosen. I understand that. And my understanding of that process is that the number, the bottom line number doesn't change, but the allocation within the county can. And that's what Chad was alluding to as far as the incorporated cities. So my question really for you, Dan, is you're familiar, I'm sure, with the growth rate in the OFM medium projection, which is pretty modest.
Right.
Do you feel, how much, I mean, how much work do you anticipate doing with our sister communities in the county to do some horse trading if we need to? Has that even come up in conversation? Because I assume the people in Clealum have pretty strong feelings too.
It did, it did come up after the, the COG voted on, on those allocations and there was some working between the communities on kind of, you know, kind of where we could trade those, those numbers around. But we took a look at it and thought that it looked like the numbers were pretty right on for, for the city of Ellensburg. So we didn't do any of those, have any of those kind of exchanges at that time.
Okay, thanks.
I, I think with your, with the affordable, affordability scenario that's coming at us, I think what with, with regards to the city of Ellensburg and UGA areas, it's going to make the city of Ellensburg look really hard at the multifamily unit concepts in order to deal with affordability. So in the end, city of Ellensburg, you know, within the UGA, however you decide to do that in your city limits, but in that area of our UGA with the city and the county, you know, how do we look at that area and deal with our existing zoning in there? And the reality is, is the city would have to take a look at maybe changing some of their designations, their, their densities and so forth within their city limits. So it's just a, it's a, it's a real difficult scenario right now that we're having to deal with this stuff, so.
I was curious about the population numbers. So Chad, you're doing a population expansion analysis and Dan's doing his. How do, how do those work together? Do they?
So, I can jump in real quick. So we're required to do the population projections and employment projections, right? And it's the county's responsibility to do that. So what we have to do is we have to do the use of the OFM, you know, from the state. We have to use the HAP tool. And, you know, we have a choice to do the low, medium, or high projection. And in the past, the county has always taken the median projection, you know, with regards to population. So we've incorporated those numbers into that HAP tool with our consultant, who had a population estimate and statistical staff person. And we chose the, the median projection of 60,000. It's just over 60,000, I don't have the exact number. And then you plug that into that modeling program and it breaks it out for every jurisdiction. City, UGA related to that, municipality, and so on. So for city of Kititas, city of Ellensburg, and then there's the unincorporated for, for the rural areas, which is us. And then what that tool further does is break it down into that 30 to 50, 80 to, 50 to 80 and into the area of medium income, housing affordability. And that's what's driving the difference into the density and the, and the discussion and look at the, the type of housing units you're going to want to use. So we had to move forward with that in order for, in order for us to move forward with the land capacity analysis. Because we need to have a projection number in order to start doing our land capacity review and how that works based on some of those numbers. So when we went through COG, we did a recommend, we, we did some presentations to COG, we did our recommendation, and then at that last recommendation, some jurisdiction municipalities came and said, oh, wait a minute, I might not have enough or I might have enough or whatever. How do we fix this or, or do that? Now, I won't say it's the easiest way, but what you can do is just stick with your projection and then just plan in the future and adjust your zoning, your development regulations. And then you have that and you're ready. You adjust that, then you can kind of move forward. But if you're willing to give up some and transfer and, you know, be nice with another municipality, that's okay too. So hopefully that got you.
Yeah, thank you.
Chad, one last question. Are you projecting out to, sorry, 2045?
2046.
46. Yeah, 20-year plan.
So another question, follow up. So you mentioned that we might have to consider multifamily, take a hard look at that. Do you think we will need to change our zoning or I guess, does this mean we might need to change our zoning from single family residence, residential to?
It's a, it's a discussion that the city's going to have to have. If we're, you know, we're, we're tagged with this affordability allocation and this requirement. And how do you do that? We can't create more lots to do that, right? And some of that is based on the size of lots and so forth. So what do you do? You have to go up or, you know, maximize your redevelopment potential on your existing lots. So do you designate areas in your city limits and maybe think about rezoning to a higher multifamily use density? I don't know what that may be because I'm not astute to your stuff. Been a long time since I looked at it, but, or do you create areas? And, and then is there, I hate to say this, I was kind of a little, taking back a look on the UGA stuff, is there, I'm not pushing this, but what about the UGA expansion? Now, I'm not saying you do that, but there's all these alternatives out there that you can do, you know? And in 2022, the legislature approved the UGA land swap. So there's requirements there where you can adjust your UGA. You know, if I remove this one and I put it here with meeting those requirements, maybe I can, I can work in the, the affordability concept and get the higher density in certain areas. So it's a, it's a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
I feel like I'm becoming a punch dummy in numbers.
Yeah.
I'm not a numbers guy.
That's interesting. Thank you.
So great conversation on all those things. The biggest aspect of this, Nancy, that will be important is the role of developers and their financing. As we've talked about with a lot of the folks in affordable housing, we can zone whatever we want or, you know, but at the end of the day, it has to math out for developers. It has to make sense. It has to work within the guidelines of those zoning. So there's always a conversation regarding those zonings and any of the barriers that either city or county has that we need to minimize so that we can entice those developers because that's also part of that economic development. Because having affordable housing is also part of the equation that we need to solve. So making sure the developers and the financiers are at the table.
Yeah, and my concern is we recently met with the developers and their model, they can only build single family homes right now and make money. So what's going to happen if, if we zone for multifamily and we don't get anybody stepping up to build that? Or what are, are the builders going to have to change how they do their business? That's just questions that I have because we ask them flat out about the affordable building, affordable housing, and they can't do it right now and make a profit.
I guess I would, I would just point out that there are some fairly obvious exceptions to that. There are a couple of developers who are doing quite a few units in relative terms and obviously the fact that they started a new project probably means they did okay on the, the previous one. So, I mean, I understand your, your issue is we can't drive what gets built, but we also have to open up those options for, for, you know, to give people a place to live. And that's going to have to be one of those options.
So my question was around AMI and the area that it, what is the geographical area? And my understanding is the county, right?
Right.
Is there any opportunity to divide that into upper and lower county? I mean, I think we're, we've got Sankadia and we have Kitatas and, you know.
Yeah, we've-
They're not the same.
Yeah. Sorry for cutting you off. You're right, they're not the same, but the reality is, is when we go do the, the OFM population projections, they're only dictated to the rural area and the municipalities and the UGAs. I've already had that question at COG and I think it was from City of Roslyn, you know? Because that is a different community up there and we have a resort, you know, resort up there and so forth and it's tough, you know? At face value, the affordability concepts and AMI is pushing everything towards the city, which, you know, falls in line with Growth Management Act, you know? Build into the UGAs, go into the city limits, that's what it does. The economic development part of it is, is it's tough for economics to happen out there in the rural areas because we're limited by GMA too. So, you know, double edged sword.
Chad glosses over very quickly, and I want to point it out. As many of you have been around know that periodic updates over the last 20 odd years in this county have been sort of fraught with legal peril. And we seem to be in a, in a, over these years, kind of in, you know, litigation a lot around growth and the administration of it. Chad pointed out very briefly that we just recently had a draft settlement put together with Yakima Nation over our critical areas ordinance at, at the county. This is actually a pretty big deal. This was, this, our, our critical areas ordinance, what was appealed by the Yakima Nation to the Growth Management Hearings Board, and the county did prevail and, and the nation appealed. Ultimately, it was on its way to the State Court of Appeals. And even though we did prevail, as any attorney will tell you, once it goes to a forum, anything can happen. So the work that Chad and, and our attorneys did with the Yakima Nation folks to come to really a foundational agreement on what best available science represents in, in our area and how to administer our critical areas accordingly, I think bodes very well for, for where we will go in the future with, with some pretty complicated things like this. So thank you for that work. That was, I think, avoidance of a lot of hard pain down the line on both sides. So I don't want to gloss that over and let you just give three words on it. Thank you.
So if no objections, we'll move on to item 4A, which is a 20, we're moving into housing and homelessness. 4A deals with the 24, 25 cold weather season shelter report through HopeSource.
Good afternoon, county and city. I'm CEO of HopeSource, Susan Grindel, and this is one of our navigators at HopeSource.
Hello, my name is Billy Promley.
And Billy worked a lot with the cold weather shelter in 25. So he has, if you have any questions about things that happened during that that are maybe a little more detailed, he'd be happy to, to give you a shot. Well, it's not often that a grantee gives back money from a grant- back money from a grant they were awarded, but we were happy to in this case because it happened for a good reason. It wasn't because there was no performance and so you lost that 70,000. It's that the performance was good for a couple of very, very good reasons, and that's how much money it saved the community because of these actions. There were 126 volunteers, which is fantastic. The more volunteers you have, the less staff time it costs, the more relationships get built with the people who are guests, which means their trust in a system goes up, and they're more likely to seek help after they've been in the shelter. There were 73 unique individuals over the time the shelter was open. Any given night, there was an average of 11. The highest night was 17 on that. The cost going down, not only was volunteer, volunteers being there so that staff time was lower, but we had budgeted to provide meals, dinners that we could bring in, pre-made things. But these five restaurants, and, well, four restaurants and one clean-cut men's salon, put up meals for the guests throughout the cold weather shelters. So Smokey's Barbecue, The Pasta Co. Company, Pearl, Jimmy John's, and then Clean Cut Men's Salon. So because of that, we didn't have to buy any food, which was enormous. And they got, they got a lot of compliments for the food, because the food was fresh and it was good and wasn't prepackaged or somebody's, you know, storage items. So that was one of the big cost savings was in the food, the savings of the meals and the volunteers. One of the things that the guests talked about was that they would like, they were very happy with this whole experience, first of all, but they said, if we, if you ask us, what would we change, we would ask for these things. More than one shower day a week, because they shower in the first of the week, and then there's nothing till the next week, and they have the weekend and the weekend. They like to be clean, too. They like to take care of themselves. So they would like to have more shower timings available. They also, there were cots for people who were disabled, and they asked that maybe that could be expanded so that everyone could sleep off the ground. That's where they normally sleep, that they could sleep on a cot. And they also talked a little bit about having day storage, which is a totally different question than a cold weather shelter. But they said, is there a possibility that there could be a place we could lock our things up during the day and not have to, you know, haul them around? And again, they enjoyed the quality and the types of food. So they were very happy with the overall experience, as were we. The only things that we learned a lot about was our communication, that we were not as clear in our communication with the guests as we should have been about where it was, how to get there, how to get to the shelter, how, what some of the requirements that could be lifted. And on your sheet, you'll see that there are, previous trespass orders were waived so that they could access the shelter, and we didn't communicate that. People didn't know that, so it would have been good. We had a lot less guests than we've ever had this year because many of those who had come to the cold weather shelter in the past built those relationships and they were housed. That's a very good thing. So the cold weather shelter had a very good benefit to it in addition to having, people aren't out in the cold, you know, and then ending up in the ER. Are there any questions?
This is more just a comment. So I had the opportunity to volunteer at the shelter, and yeah, the operation went very well. It was good to be able to see how things work, especially those repeat guests that knew the rules and came in pleasantly surprised by the situation. I could see the question regarding storage. For those that aren't aware, you have a lot of those guests that, depending on the season, and folks know, during shoulder seasons, it can be very warm during the day, and so they're light color, they have light clothes during the day, and when they get into night, they usually have a backpack or two backpacks, and they're switching into warmer clothes so that they can be comfortable as they sleep on the pad on the ground. So that's, that's kind of the comment associated with lockers. They're not looking to move in with furniture or anything like this. This is simply kind of the clothes kind of stuff. It is good to see that type of savings in this type of program, and it's also recognition of the community, being able to respond and help out with a community issue. So I applaud that, and I hope that we can share this news continually, because people really need to understand that. One of the things that I would ask from you, Susan, and I've asked this before, I'll continue to ask this, those guests that have made that transition from being homeless to transition to permanent housing, I think that's an excellent story that needs to be told in numbers. And people need to understand that there are people in this community that have been here for a long, long time, but they have successfully made that transition, because there is a stereotype, there is a perception, and those kinds of things like that. And some of that we, there are true, and we need to address those things, that there might be behavioral or drugs or those kinds of stuff like that. But there are also true success stories of people that have made that full transition of being homeless and being a productive member of society. So we need to be able to tell that through these numbers, and I'm hoping that you could expand upon those stories a little bit more. So thank you.
We are trying to increase awareness. We have some focus groups that we will be conducting in May and June with small groups around the community where people can ask questions and we can be in front of them. But I was in DC last week at a media mastery boot camp. So yes, we should be getting better at that.
Thank you, and thank you for your efforts. We'll transition into 4B, which talks about the 2025, 2026 cold weather shelter partnerships, potential site operations, and just a discussion coming up.
So good evening, Ellensburg City Council and County Commissioners. Heidi Behren, Sternaway City Manager, I will take this one, and this is, again, another opportunity for partnership. And so what Susan didn't cover is just a little overview of the cold weather shelter. And, and so I'd like to talk a little bit about that. Our arrangement with the county last year was that the city would provide the funding for the shelter itself, and thank you very much, county, for offering up the event center. We did a tremendous amount of work looking for a site last year and knocked on just about every door we could think of and did several different analyses, and really appreciate that opportunity. And the county had some dollars, some grant dollars from the state that they were able to fund the services, and they had the agreement with HopeSource to provide the services for the cold weather shelter. I believe the dates were, typically, we do mid-November, and I think they started up about November 15th, and I think we ended early March, so March 5th or 6th?
10th.
Excuse me?
10th.
10th, thank you. March 10th. And so, so that was our agreement last year. We know this is a critical service. Cold weather shelters save lives, and it was one of the priorities. And the question to you all tonight, we're not making decisions here, but is there interest in partnering again for this next season? We have actually been approached and are very grateful for the offer. There's a church in town that has offered a space that could potentially be, as an annex, potentially be leased year-round. The cost would be about half of what we spent on the facility itself for this last season, and that would be for a year-round lease. And so we'd have more flexibility for the dates, and there might be other use as well for that facility. And so, again, that would be an option, but looking at how we provide those services as well. So just early discussion about conceptually, is there interest in partnering again to run another seasonal cold weather shelter in 2025 and 26?
I don't see anybody nodding no, so.
Okay, okay. And we would work together on securing the site and also determining how we do that and what the partnership looks like for that. And so we'll have some additional discussions and council action and county commissioner action in the future.
I have one comment. My preference has always been for the, for our faith-based community to pick this one back up. I think this began with them. It certainly served, I think, the, a purpose for quite a while. I know this was a struggle that many of us had during, during the discussion last year over a sleep center. If there is a hybrid model where not just, not just facility, but also volunteers and such, instead of the rotating model, there's a single place where government and the faith community are partnering together to solve this, that would really be my preference. I think it's putting your money where your mouth is on both sides, and I think it really unifies the intent and purpose of what we're trying to accomplish here.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Commissioner. And if you look back at the operations for this last year, I think you actually had that private and public model with all of the volunteers. It was, it was a service opportunity for our community, and I know a lot of our faith groups chipped in to participate in that, and it really did lower the cost and make a much more effective service.
Media mastery. We need to have that story.
So to that point, as far as that community solution, I think this is a campaign effort. This is a communication thing that we continue to communicate out there. It's like, hey, guys, it's that time again. We need help. We need volunteers. We need the resources. And being able to share that load, be able to serve this in our community. So if we're able to just really work on a campaign communication, then that's, that might be part of it.
And I think that's going to take us into the next item, which is 4C, and, you know, talk about sleep center and whether or not this evolves into what we just talked about with 4B.
Okay, and I will take that one as well. I just give you one minute. It's true behind me. No, he's on.
He's coming.
Okay.
All right. Good evening again. I thought I would start with this presentation to get you up to speed of where we left off last year. And so this is a very brief, I think I have less than 10 slides here. As you recall, the last joint meeting was actually in June of last year, and it was, the topic was the sleep center. And so looking at sighting and the need and really the why behind a sleep center. And I think we have, we've had some elements that have changed in the community and have evolved in the community since that time. So, so if you recall the problem statement at over 22, 23, 24, we were seeing, we were seeing a rise in the number of people in our community experiencing homelessness. It was becoming more, more visible in our community, and we had some laws in place, some case law in place with Boise decision and Grants Pass that had some limitations on enforcement of public camping in, in public areas. And, and again, the studies show, and we have come to understand, that housing, housing costs and the price of housing and homelessness are directly connected. There's a direct correlation. And we know we have some, we have challenges about affordability in our city and also in our county. And, and really, we also know that because of the limitations, there was a lack of year-round, year-round shelter, emergency shelter for folks. And so we're looking together about what solutions were out there. And I would just remind folks that our meeting, I think it was about three, three and a half years ago, we actually started an ad hoc committee on homelessness, looking at how can we work together and making sure that it's not just the shelter piece of it, but are we addressing the other, what are the other gaps in our services? And gaps in behavioral health services, public safety services, and a number of things came out of that, including change in our camping ordinance, which is actually very much aligned with the counties as well. So, so we looked, again, very comprehensively about where the gaps were and what issues were and how we could address those together. Let's see here. We'll see if this works. Okay. Oops. All right. So just a quick, you know, again, what we've seen in trends, and I know this is old data, there's a lot more information out now that, you know, homelessness is a housing problem. And so there's been a rise across the country in Washington State and looking for a comprehensive way to address those, that issue. One of the things we saw this year, and so this is, these are preliminary numbers from our point in time census, is we actually saw a drop in unsheltered individuals. What we were seeing was a constant increase, and what we see right now is a drop. And so, as Susan mentioned, we have a number of folks who have been housed. What we heard anecdotally from the folks who we're doing service at and have done service at the cold weather shelter for years is that, yes, a lot of the guests that they had served in the past actually were in housing at the moment. And so, so this is a trend, and this is a change, this is a change to that trend we were seeing over time. When we met last June, we heard from law enforcement, and I believe it was Chris Witsett that talked a little bit about the challenges of law enforcement. And we hear from our own police that they need tools in order to do their jobs. They have a hard time, too, moving somebody from one place to another when there's no place for them to be. That's a difficult thing for a human being. And at the time, too, we had very limited tools available because of the laws that were in place. And we also know that there's a cost to, you know, to homelessness. When we don't have housing, folks use different services, and it creates stress on those services. And so our emergency rooms, our jails, and our hospital system in general. And we do have impacts to businesses and thinking about what those are. Those have not gone away. And, but, but again, we have public safety and health challenges with homelessness in general. And, you know, there is a benefit to having some sort of emergency shelter, a place for people to go. Just the housing continuum is such that if you have somebody who is unhoused, they may not be successful. And so in any type, in every type of housing. And so thinking about trying to make sure we have services available that meets people's needs along that spectrum, and, and making sure, again, that oftentimes, communities look at the housing-first model, meaning that if somebody is experiencing behavioral health challenges, if they're also having a housing crisis, that they don't, they're not housed, it's hard to work on those other issues and those other barriers to move along that continuum, as opposed to, you know, just, again, it's hard to get folks into services if they're not housed. So. When we ended our discussion at the end of the joint meeting in last June, we had four possible locations for a sleep center. All of these were very expensive to, to actually bring up to habitability to create these, and this was just the land development code, and land development improvements and utilities. Either the purchase price or the purchase price combined with the site development and utility improvements exceeded any, any funds we have available for within the county and the city. And that, again, doesn't even count for the cost of setting up a facility, then operating a facility. So, so things, a few circumstances have changed over time. We know that there are, the tools for law enforcement are a little bit different. So the regulatory environment with the Grants Pass decision has actually changed a little bit and softened the opportunity for enforcement. We do have clearer rules, essentially a clearer ordinance, both for our county and our city on locations for public camping. We know that we had community concerns. There, I think one of the most common concerns, we call it the magnet theory, people are concerned that if you build facilities, people will just come here. And so that was difficult to find a location. We heard a lot that, yes, we think we need a service, but we couldn't find a location that was suitable to, to neighbors as well, and neighboring uses essentially, too. We do know that there's, you know, different types of facilities have different types of risk mitigations. However, whatever type of service we put in, the rules and enforcement is very, very important to make sure that safety remains, both for the folks who use that service, the guests, and also for, for the and also for, for the, the neighbors. And so, and we've learned from others. There are other communities that are continuing to operate their sleep centers. Folks probably know that Moses Lake is, is, is closing their sleep center as well. So communities have sort of shifted in what they're doing. And we've been keeping an eye on, on what's going on around us as well. And, and where we ended last year was we're going to stop looking at sites and we're going to focus on the seasonal cold weather shelter. We know that's an essential and our, our faith community at the time said, we can't do this anymore, only by volunteers, so we need help. And again, the cost is, one, an uncertainty, and two, very high. So, so with that, our recommendation, we've had discussions with our ad hoc committee. I know the county is working on their five-year plan and looking at what are our goals. And, you know, timing is everything. And so the recommendation at this time is to really discontinue the sleep center sighting work that we had been looking at and look at continuing that cold weather shelter service to make sure we have that, that a major gap, a critical gap for services available in our, our community. And so again, not asking you to make decisions. If there are independent decisions, we can do those as bodies, but just an opportunity to talk about this item since we haven't met for almost a year.
So in short, sort of shifting focus is sort of the, the environment has, has created that option for us. And so, again, we can't make decisions here. So if you feel differently, it's probably a good idea to just say you feel differently and we can talk about it independently amongst ourselves at our regularly scheduled meetings where we can make decisions. So, work to communicate that at a later time. Okay. Four D is affordable housing. Project update.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor and Council. I'm Lily Frye, Housing Program Manager for the City of Ellensburg. I'll give a short update on some of our recent work in progress projects and next steps on affordable housing. We're grateful for partnership with County Committee and Public Health Staff for working on this community challenge as well. I'll focus on housing needs in Ellensburg, which will vary, of course, across the county. In Ellensburg, more than a quarter of households spend more than 50% of their income on housing, also known as being severely cost burdened. Another 14% pay 30% or more of their income for housing. For a total of about 40% of households who we say are cost burdened or where their housing costs make it hard to pay for other expenses. Most of our cost burdened households are renters. To afford the average rent for a two-bedroom apartment as of April, a household would need to make about $49,000 per year or about $23.50 hourly. And to afford the average home in Ellensburg, a household would need to earn about $99,000 annually, which makes homeownership a challenge for many households. In 2021, Ellensburg adopted a housing action plan with three goals. Producing more housing, adding variety to the housing stock, particularly smaller units for smaller households and for greater affordability, and preserving and creating income restricted affordable housing. So I'll give some specifics on some income restricted affordable housing developments. Many of you have probably been part of, or seen the Habitat for Humanity project on Bender Road, Stewart Meadows. Six households have moved in there with six more scheduled for this summer and then the final six next summer. This is a homeownership development where the families own the homes, but a land trust managed by Habitat controls the land, reducing the purchase price for homeowners. The city contributed the property for this development and some funding and has helped administer a state grant for infrastructure work on the property. Habitat brought in plenty of funding from other sources for this project as well. Moving to some planned projects. Hope Source worked with county and city funds to purchase the Knights Inn, an adjacent property, and has secured significant additional funding to construct 78 units across the motel renovation and three new buildings planned for the site. This property will include a mix of affordability levels with half of the units affordable to people making 30% of area median income and the other half affordable to people with incomes up to 50% of median. Twenty of the units will be reserved for households who are homeless or at immediate risk of homelessness. These are units where the residents have a lease and can renew indefinitely. They're not transitional housing units. The city has also received pass-through infrastructure grant, a pass-through infrastructure grant from the state for this project. And it is scheduled for completion in late 2026. Near downtown, at First and Pine, just south of the library, the city has designated a property for contribution for a combination of homeownership and rental units, where all units are income limited to 80% of AMI. Homeowners would own a townhome with an attached ADU and rent out one unit and reside in the other. Development, the developers are still raising funds and lending commitments for this project. And the project is scheduled for two phases with completion in 2027 and 2028. Hope Source's Addison Place Housing Acquisition Project has received funding, funding commitment from the county. And this project will come before Ellensburg City Council for consideration on May 19. Hope Source is seeking funding to acquire eight units in four duplexes currently under construction. Hope Source would manage these units directly and they would be available for occupancy this fall. Using affordable housing sales tax revenue, the city will consider other funding opportunities and projects as we receive applications. Do you have any questions about these currently planned projects? And then in response to the housing action plan, the City of Ellensburg has been taking steps to support residential development, such as allowing two ADUs per lot with principal, with a principal residential unit before the legislative deadline and reducing requirements that disincentivized townhome and cottage developments. The city has also decreased parking requirements for studio and one-bedroom units in multifamily buildings and townhouses with one or two bedrooms. We are hopeful that these recent changes can help developers who want to build smaller units, but will continue to monitor and gauge efforts to adjust if needed. We also have several incentives that support affordable housing that is reserved for households up to designated income levels, such as traffic impact fee waivers since 2019 and a new ordinance for water and sewer connection fee waivers. We also have multifamily tax exemptions for up to 12 years for new developments that have at least some units in a development that are affordable in our central commercial zones and density bonus opportunities for the residential suburban and residential low zones of Ellensburg. We've seen limited uptake of these tools to date and they all have reporting requirements around affordability. And we continue to learn about challenges to housing and adapt these tools within the limits of the RCWs that authorize them. So what's next? Like the county, the city will be updating our comprehensive plan, as you heard about earlier, including a housing element that allows us to update our housing needs assessment and plan to support more affordable housing development. We also have a designated additional property for affordable housing, the Catherine Property, next to KXLE on Vantage Highway, where we're planning wetland reconnaissance to determine the buildable area. In Ellensburg, there are two affordable complexes, affordable housing complexes that have expiring restrictions in 2027, where, where we will reach out to the owners and seek to preserve the income restricted affordable housing that we have. And we'll continue to look for ways that we can support ADU construction to add to the rental housing stock. We're also interested in exploring opportunities with, for partnership with county, private and nonprofit developers to meet our collective community housing needs. Any questions about our affordable housing work?
I just want to express my thanks for the city for streamlining some of these regulations that have been a hindrance in the past for housing such as this. It's important to work, as we all know, hand in hand with those who actually do the work, the developers of building these doors. So appreciate that. From a partnership standpoint, I think the county over the next 10 to 20 years is going to have some, some potential parcels available. I think we do have land within the city that, as things change, we would certainly be open to, to moving forward with that. And the other thing is that I will say, this and the economic development discussion go hand in hand. The chicken and the egg, I think, description could be given to some of the conversations we had during the development of the economic plan from folks saying, you need housing first. No, you need business first. And it's back and forth. They both need to happen. We simply can't build enough doors for all the folks that, that need it based on their income levels. Therefore, we've got to work to raise the income levels in this town for folks to be able to move out of it and make room for others and continue the, I think, traditional model of home, of homeownership as much as we can. So thanks for your work there though, especially on the understanding some of the challenges. And I think that's been a big departure over the past years. Appreciate that.
And I would just add, our Community Development Director has reached out to all of the jurisdictions to continue to have conversations with our, at a staff level too, looking at specifically affordable housing and how we might be able to partner together on, on mutual interests.
Thank you. Behavioral health funding update is item five and five A is an update through Kiddatass County Public Health on the 0.1% funding.
Okay, well, the slides are coming up. I will introduce myself. I'm Brett Waxmith. I chair the 1/10th 1% Mental Health and Chemical Dependency Committee. And with me tonight is?
I'm Casey Knutson. I'm the Human Services Manager at the Kiddatass County Public Health Department.
Okay. So as you may or may not know, on December 7th of 2021, the Kiddatass County Board of Commissioners, we held a public hearing regarding implementing the 1/10th 1% sales tax for mental health and chemical dependency substance use disorder tax. Because of the COVID-19 restrictions at the time, the public hearing was held virtually without any in-person option. But during that meeting, which is available to view online at the county's website, there was a public, there was public testimony in addition to an agency presentation from the Kiddatass County Health Network. The issues that were presented included the opioid epidemic, overdose deaths, increase in mental health concerns, youth suicide, and increase in emergency calls and limited access to services.
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
I'll figure out how to screw this up. Okay, well, I just wanted to add. Okay. The sales and use tax takes every 10 cents of $100 spent to be spent specifically on mental health and substance use disorder. It's under RCW 8214460, which states money's collected under this section must be used solely for that purpose of providing for the operation or delivery of chemical dependency or mental health treatment programs and services for the operation or delivery of therapeutic court programs. I will note that we are just about to embark on our third round of RFPs that are going to go out. And I believe that the tax collects roughly a little more than $2 million annually. And we've pieced it out into essentially three separate buckets of funds, which I think Casey will touch on in a little bit.
Yeah, so with the start of the, the tax implementation, one of the first steps was creating an advisory board previous to this. There was a behavioral health advisory board. It was combined with a different board, substance use. They'd both been around for ages. So this was revamped once that tax implementation started. The advisory board meets once a month. Folks are welcome to attend. It's an open public meeting. We have representation that is across the county. So there's different voting districts that are represented. There's also folks that have lived experience, whether that's mental health or substance use disorder. So there's a broad range of, of community voices that are part of this advisory board. One of their main functions, as Brett mentioned, when we open our RFP, they provide review of all of those projects that are put forward. And then they make a further recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, who ultimately have the decision-making authority on what projects are going to be funded moving forward. We've had the funding in place now for some of our folks to complete an entire year's worth of work. So again, talking about that one prong of how we fund this, I'll talk more about more of a three-pronged approach. But you can see that there's a wide range of, of prevention. And then also there's treatment and response. So there's some really fantastic projects and partnerships that are already happening. There's a highlight sheet that folks should have. There's highlight sheets, I think, probably printed out extra too, if you want to look at these while I'm talking or after the fact, because we don't want to take up too much of your time. But one of the things that I really want to point out is some of these projects have fantastic relationships with our other agencies already in place. In fact, one of the projects that President Woolport mentioned was something that came through this funding stream. And then also, if you look at the data sheet, I just want to point out, because I see that Chief Wade is speaking about the Ellensburg Handle With Care program. When you're looking at the highlights from the Central Washington University program, they just did a presentation to our advisory board that was fantastic. And one of the largest sources of their referrals is coming from the Handle With Care program. So when you're talking about these projects that are coming through, they're really working well with other community partners. So it's effective and pretty phenomenal to watch. The county decided, moving forward, that this has more of a three-pronged approach. So when we talk about the funding that comes through the request for proposal, that is just one element of what's being funded. So we also have funding that goes through our justice system. We have Behavioral Health Court. We have the County Jail Service. Again, we're trying to get the word out more now that we have a Human Services Division so that people understand the work that's really happening. We just had Ed Button from the Kiddatass County Jail do a presentation to our advisory committee and talking about the work that they can do so that they can decrease recidivism. They're having more assessments completed, more people are accessing treatment so that when those folks are exiting, they're going to be more successful as well. So the, the justice side, and then also what's really exciting is that the educational system now has access to these funds as well. And every district in Kiddatass County has taken advantage of these funds. That just started this most recent year. So some of the projects are starting to come in for their first quarter report. And one that comes up immediately to mind is the Thorpe School District. And they are starting a summer program. And so they're just in the planning stages, but their schedule that they have for summer camp has mental health sessions that are going to be implemented as part of a bigger program. I know that Morgan Middle School, I don't know if Brett wants to talk about that with his experience. Did you want to share about what the middle school's doing?
Well, I think my kids would get upset at me for calling them out. But we, they just implemented little pouches for their cell phones that every kid has to put in, or every student that goes to Morgan Middle School. And it's really reduced some of the bullying and some of the videos that students are already, had been taking historically there. So it's already improved the kids' morale and their attention through class. So it's been, yeah, surprise, surprise. So it's already been successful. And this is a neat thing to actually see those funding, the funding get to work in an impactful way.
And then the third prong, as I mentioned before, is that community organizations can access these funds through our request process. And then if you want to?
And, yeah, and really quick, the Behavioral Health Court, if you haven't gone, it's a pretty neat experience to see graduation from the Behavioral Health Court. It's been a neat thing to see the prosecution side, the law enforcement side, and the defense, and then the providers all come together. And it's pretty cool too, to see the judges that they rotate from upper district and lower district, that actually treat the individual as a human. And they've seen them as the lowest of lows and they've gone through the process. The process is usually a little more than a year. And they come out on the other side, once they graduate, is somebody that's back functioning again. And so it's been a really cool experience to see the Behavioral Health Court.
It comes at the next ones next week, correct? Or it's coming up?
It's coming up, yeah. And I could share it around when they send it to you. Oh, you did? Okay.
We'll, we'll have counsel there.
Okay. And then those are held in the Commissioners Auditorium.
And then as Brett mentioned earlier, we are going to have our RFP cycle coming out for community agencies that want to pursue these funds. We do a little bit extra where we don't just publish them in the normal places. We make sure that this is out of social media. We make sure it's out on our website. We'll make sure our partners know, because we want to make sure that the community knows that they have access to these funds if they have a, an appropriate project. So again, you have these highlight forums. This again is just highlighting these projects. There's a wide range. So we have prevention when we're talking about some of the projects with Central Washington University. Those are free counseling services for youth. There's no cost. We have folks that are embedded in the hospitals. We have folks that are now embedded in the jail. So there's a full, comprehensive. So, there's a full, comprehensive approach to this in the county. With the proposals that came through most recently, it's the same. We have the youth aspect where you have Boys and Girls Club. You have the senior aspect where you've got the Upper County Senior Center that's proceeded with these funds. So, you have that full gamut of youth, senior, you have prevention, you have treatment. It's a broad array of an approach.
Yes, the sunset clause. So, when we passed this legislatively at the county level, there was a sunset clause set for December 31st of 2027, and that was for the main point to ensure that we're enacting something that is actually in our community, working, making a difference. It's not just another tax. I know that tax is a dirty word to a lot of people, and so we've been in the phase, really, of gathering the data, which we're sharing some tonight, and to show the community impact. With any tax, we want to ensure that the quality of work is being completed, and that there's positive change happening in the county. I will note that the vote was not a unanimous vote, so it'll be imperative of all of the work that's done, that it really shows what has been accomplished in the short period of time that we've had the tax enacted.
Does anyone have any questions for me, or questions that I can track down and bring back to the folks in the room?
No, thank you.
So, after 2027, is your plan to go to a vote of the people to, I mean, you've proved the concept. You have a story you can tell to maybe, depending on, but it always depends on voters' moods, right? So, I mean, so would you consider doing it councilmanically again or going to a vote?
So, speaking for myself, yes, but I do not want to wait until the end of '27. I would like to personally bring something forward at some point either later this year or early next year in the first quarter of '26. We've had, like I said earlier, three rounds of funding for the RFPs, and I think there's enough data out there to showcase the impact that we've had. So, hopefully sooner than later to make it a permanent tax, a permanent revenue stream for these programs, because we've already, like Casey hit on, we have a three-pronged approach, and the Commissioners have already decided to allocate basically a third to our school districts, which every school district opted into, and then another third has been allocated toward already our established programs within the jail and with the Behavioral Health Court. So, there's some certainty around that, as well as the DCRs and the emergency room as well. So, those are the three that we've funded outside of our RFP cycle. I've allocated about a third of the remaining funds to the competitive RFP cycle that this committee reviews and recommends to the Commissioners.
Thank you. Same topic, Handle With Care and Mental Health Referral Trends.
And I'll be doing that from up here. I'm meeting everybody. I'm Ken Wade. I'm the chief of the Ellsberg Police Department. It's a pleasure to get to stand here before you and talk about some of the successes that we're seeing in the mental health and substance abuse field. It's kind of a lead-in, not on any of the notes, but it's been approximately 18 months since we've experienced a controlled substance overdose death in our city, which is outstanding considering prior to that, we've seen nine overdose deaths, three overdose deaths, six in those three following years. So, there is some success, particularly in that area, but it's not limited just to substance abuse. Tonight's study session is titled, for me, "Public Safety Intersection with Mental Health." And I guess to lead into this, mental health and its influence or its impact to our law enforcement, it comes in many different forms. There are those in the community that are able to appropriately manage their own mental health concerns or issues through families or through self-care. There's those that need maybe a little higher level of support, and then there's those that really need pretty aggressive support. And we're fortunate enough that we have some of these resources that are being developed. You'll see here that when I talk about a mental health referral, that's what law enforcement, when we come in contact with an individual in the community, and most often, it's not a crime at the time, but what we will do is call a mental health referral. We're not trained counselors, but when we see behaviors or actions that kind of lead us to believe through our prior experience that this may be a mental health or substance abuse issue, then the reports that are taken, the actions that are taken surrounding that are also coded and put into Spillman, and then from that, we extract this information. The Ellsberg Police Department uses a precision policing model, so we're using analytics, we're using evidence-based policing. And in taking a look at this, you'll see that those in crisis that we have to deal with, we're very grateful to have the DCRs available. In past years, it was a call-out situation, so sometimes we were waiting hours for it, but because of some of the funding resources that are available now, it's just a matter of me taking him down to the hospital. It's also important to note that the Ellsberg Police Department will do transports for comprehensive mental health to the hospital or back and forth to the residence, and we also transport back and forth to the cold weather shelter as it was needed. Of course, that is dependent on staffing of our calls at the time. You'll see in 2023, we had 452 mental health referrals. In 2024, we were up 497, and towards the end, I'll show you a five-year or 10-year trend. Total number of individuals, 272 unique individuals. In 2024, 270. Individuals with four or more referrals, 19 people, and they made up 25% in 19 of both years. And it's also interesting to note that in both of those categories, individuals with four or more, there were also four individuals that were there both years. So, we're not talking about one year, and then they're out of the system, they're in treatment. It's continuing to come along, the same individuals, and the officers know most of them on a first-name basis. Juveniles, one of our areas of concern right now, you see, we had 28 juveniles involved, 33 last year. The sad news, when you look at it, age range, 11 to 91. So, those are officers contacting people in that age range, and then last year, 5 to 90. Arrests, you know, we have arrested, what, 36 out of 452 people? So, mental health is clearly not a crime, but there are those instances where law enforcement has to take enforcement, and you'll see it's a very low percentage. 36 in '23, 27 in '34. Those that are not local residents of Ellensburg, and when we talk about local residents of Ellensburg, we include all of Kiddatass County. So, if you live in Easton, you're considered an Ellensburg resident for my statistics, but in there, you'll see only 39 people out of 452 were not Ellensburg residents. So, when we hear that people are coming into our community or being bused into our community and bringing to mental health, that's not accurate, that's not what the statistics are showing us. And then again, you know, through 400, or 43, only 9% in 2024. And then I can tell you that we're seeing improvements. Here, year-to-date, and this is, the first graph is for the first four months of the year, you will see the trends. You'll see that we're down almost 30% in mental health referral calls in the first four months. Mental health referrals annually, you know, we're sitting at 110 so far for the year in 2025. So, we're hoping that the trend continues and that our numbers continue to trend downward. Suicide attempts, this is the other aspect that we come in contact with mental health in our community. A suicide attempt is where a person takes some substantial step, either through the ingestion of narcotics, the statement and some action that leads us to believe that it is truly some attempt being made. And you'll see we're at 13, it's the same place we were last year, year-to-date. We've been highly successful in seeing those numbers drop. If you look at the graph on your right, you'll see the, a pretty dramatic drop, but if 2025 continues to play out, we'll be close, if not maybe slightly higher than where we were last year. And then this is the worst-case scenario. Since January 23, there have been 82 attempted suicides reported to EPD. Of those 82, six attempts involved youth, 18 or younger. Four of those have happened in the last five months. We've responded to 20 suicides in the last 10 years. Our suicide stats show that our ages are 1 teen, five in their 20s, six in their 30s, three in their 40s, two in their 50s, and three in their 60s. You'll see that 16 males and four females committed suicide, 16 white, two Hispanic and two Asian. And the primary methods are hanging, firearms, prescription drug overdose, cut wrists, and carbon monoxide poisoning. Moving on to a little lighter topic, what Ms. Knutson was talking about with the Handle With Care, and I apologize to counsel, this is probably a repeat of some of the information that you've already seen, but we noticed a pretty substantial increase in juvenile crime in '22 going into '23. And so, Dr. Ellie Carr, our criminal analyst, started digging more into the information, trying to find out what was causing this, and we were, you know, we've seen an increase in juvenile crime and associated with gang activity, but not entirely gang-related. What we found when we looked at some of the individuals or the youth involved in these activities is that they oftentimes experienced a large ACE indicator scores. ACE is adverse childhood experiences. And so, taking a look at that, we tried to find out what was the best solution for this. Purpose of this, to try to put our fingers in the dam. We want to stop the kids getting into the mental health system and then allow those that are in there to continue to work through and get them out. So, as you'll see, ACE or adverse child experience plays a significant role, not only in families, in health, but in the economic vitality of our nation. Physical health issues, chronic disease, obesity and substance abuse, mental health issues, difficulty forming healthy relationships, lower academic achievement, higher risk to engaging in risky behavior, substance abuse or unsafe sexual activity, shortened life expectancy, and increased mortality rates, and intergenerational transmission. What we did is we found, in reaching out, we spoke with Yakima Police Department, and they spoke with us about their Handle With Care program. Their program is different than ours in some instances, but we both reached out through the School District 105 out of Yakima, which has people that specialize in this Handle With Care, and they also appreciate our method that we're doing it, and they're trying to replicate what we're doing in Ellensburg, in Yakima County. But what we found was, well, back up a little bit, the juvenile Handle With Care program was first developed by Harvard in a partnership between their medical field and their law field, and they were looking at ways to try to improve the development and growth of children. And so, we took this program, and when I say "we," I'm talking about we as law enforcement in general, the Sheriff's Department, Clay Allen Police Department, Kiddatass Police Department, Central Washington University are all involved in this, so are all the school districts. And we brought in other partners, so we have Michelle from the Community Health Clinic, who's been a great partner with us on this, the Prosecutor's Office, Spark, which is a nonprofit that specializes in gang activity, Boys and Girls Club of Grant County has sat in on it, and so we brought as many partners to the table as we could. What happens, or what a Handle With Care program is, is any time one of the officers responds to an incident where a child is suspected of experiencing a Handle With Care or an adverse child experience, then in their report, they note a code JHWC, juvenile Handle With Care. Every morning, my staff runs a report and pulls the names from who all those youth are, and then we send a notice to the school resource officers and let them know that this child had a school, or had a Handle With Care. They speak with the hospital, or with the hospitals, with the school district, just and let them know that this child may have experienced an adverse child experience and to provide support. They are not provided any other details. The training that's provided to the schools is that when a child is identified as a Handle With Care, that they're not to ask questions, they're there to be supportive of the child. So, if a child is having a bad day, if he can't take a test because he can't concentrate, if he has public outbursts, there's probably a reason behind that, and so this program allows the school to have a kind of a heads-up, to be careful about this. Each child is identified for a two-week period of time, and that way, when the officers may run into them again in the community, they will understand that the reason that this individual may be lashing out or acting the way he is, is because of this exposure. So, we also, the part that we are different than the others is we do a direct referral on all kids that comes into this program to the Central Washington's Community Clinic. And so, any child 12 to 17, as Ms. Knutson mentioned, will get free counseling service if they are willing to accept it. And they also provide not just counseling to the youth, but to the families, so that the families know how to deal with the situation that is developing in their household or has been in their household for a period of time. All of this is no-cost mental health treatment. We have a tracking system to make sure that we are serving the individuals the best we can, and that then we pull the information out there, tracked by a individual number, not by name. This is what we've done so far. When we look at the October 24th, that was the very first Handle With Care. We were going to kick it off on November 1st, but I backed up my officers on a call on the 31st, and in that call, we had an individual who was threatening suicide and attempted to stab her husband. And so, when we were talking with her, she fled the residence, and when we were talking with her, trying to find out, trying to get her to calm down, try to get comprehensive to come out with a DCR, try to get control over the situation there, I freed up an officer to go contact the spouse, and he came back and told us that there were two children in the residence. Those children got to witness their mother attempt to stab the father. They also got to witness the child threatened, or the mom threatened to kill herself in front of the child. And so, I bumped them up. So, those were the very first two. You can see so far, we've had 265 kids. And the best part of the whole slide is 30 of them have received mental health treatment and continue to. And put this in perspective, this is what Kiddatass County has been looking at, I shouldn't say that, back up, this is what the city of Ellensburg is looking at since 2015. I showed up here in 2015 as a captain and became the chief in 2018. As you can tell, I must have done a pretty poor job, because we had the most substantial jump between 2015 and 2018. But you can see the numbers have constantly been rising. We've been trying everything possible to drive these numbers down, and I can tell you, we're seeing success through the 1/10th 1%. We're seeing the numbers, we can see it in the arrests that we're seeing in juveniles, and the parents, and those people that you see out in the community. So, it's been beneficial. Any questions?
Thank you for the presentation, Chief Wade. As we've seen in our community, there's been a lot of stuff where our community members have stepped up to the plate with addressing some of these needs. If you would, the parents or... If you would, the parents or non-parents or the people in this room that just care about our youth, what are the things that they can do? What are the avenues that they can participate to be able to give their time to help out with this?
Well, I can tell you that this is not a police matter. And so those areas that need to take on and focus, the need to support are primarily going to be your schools. That's the primary place where the kids are at. And then we're finding that oftentimes, a parent will parent as they were parented. And so as our, you know, community has changed, as our society has changed, we need to make sure that we're providing adequate resources for parents. And so contacting, comprehensive, contacting these, Michelle at Central's mental health facility there, and, I mean, pay attention, listen to your kids. I have no solutions for that, but we're doing everything that we can. We're doing public presentations, we're trying to bring the resources in. But the important part is, is if you have any questions, reach out to the experts. But I don't want this to be painted as a sad story because it's not. Mental health is improving in our community from my perspective. And keep in mind, my perspective is usually at the crisis level, it's not at the day-to-day mental health, because people are able to manage that, people live their lives through that, so.
I just want to say this, thank you to Chief Wade, to Brett and your committee, to public health. This is really, really exciting, the reports that we've heard tonight, and gives me a lot of hope for the future. I look forward to seeing the data and how things are progressing.
Thank you.
Chief, those 265 referrals since last October, are those 265 individual individuals or are those repeat referrals for some?
I can tell you that they are, they do include some repeat referrals, but the number, as I was, as I learned, was not as high as we were seeing in our mental health referrals. But again, this is a new program. I expect this to expand more as the county and the other school districts are able to get involved in it. But yeah, I mean, I would say of the 265, probably 240 are unique individuals.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item six, America 250, and this will be an overview of our efforts in the county and the coordination.
Yeah, I think me again. If you're not aware, next year, 2026, marks the 250th anniversary since the signing of the Declaration of Independence, and there's a nationwide efforts that are going on to reflect on the USA's past, present, and future. Each state was asked to form and organize a committee, which in our state is chaired by our Lieutenant Governor, with staff from the Washington State Historical Society. The committee ensures that each county coordinates a local commemorative planning committee to look at all the events that we put on and the activities that occur throughout the year to see how America 250 themes can be kind of woven through those and incorporated into those. Earlier this year, Lorraine Ralston, the America 250 Coordinator for Washington State, met with the county. I know that she stopped at the city, and I believe she stopped at the Chamber of Commerce to pass on information and to bring us up to speed on what they have going on and how to become a partner. We plan to bring a group together and coordinate with local entities and stakeholders, who should be included in our event planning process. I put together a quick list of representatives that we're going to, that I'll reach out to to form our committee, but it's going to include representatives, obviously, from our cities, the county, the university, downtown associations, local nonprofits, the Chamber of Commerce, fair and rodeo boards, because there is one theme that they want to incorporate into our fair theme for 2026. Also, our veteran organizations, school districts, just to name a few, but I'm sure that everyone in here has ideas of who else should be involved in the planning efforts. This is a once-in-a-generational opportunity for us to focus on the importance of our history, to also hopefully foster some new partnerships. And as a veteran myself, I'm excited because I hope that we can instill in our kids even more pride of why they should be proud to be an American. If you want any more information, you can visit americatwo fifty wa dot org to sign up to partner, or if you would like to learn some more information. But please don't hesitate to reach out to myself or to Rich Elliott or Heidi at the city or Amy at the chamber if you think that there's an organization that I didn't list that should be involved in those planning efforts. But that is just more to come, and I think that was a high-level overview of why we're talking about America 250.
Thank you. So the last item that we added to our agenda is just sort of an opportunity to bring up anything that we didn't get a chance to talk to, we didn't put on the agenda, again, you know, in a study session context. And if it's not ready for conversation today, we can certainly put it on the agenda for future meetings.
I would like to offer up our veteran service officers, our VSOs, through our Human Services Division of Public Health. We went from having zero in the county to now we have two, one's funded from the state of Washington in particular, the other, the county is funded. But we were viewed from the state of Washington as having such an underrepresented veteran population for services, that the state of Washington actually reached out to the county and said, hey, here's some money and here's a timeframe that we'll fund this for. And I actually think that they're going to re-up the three years that they provided to the county, because that state VSO has actually started to travel to Grant County, the tri-cities, Yakima, because we're doing, I think, in my opinion, really good work for our veterans. We have roughly 4,000 veterans in Kitata County, give or take, don't quote me on the exact number, but that is including the population that goes to CWU as well. So I think it would be great to have a study session with this group to highlight some of the shared successes that we've seen, because it's not just the county, it's definitely the city of Ellensburg that's impacted by those services that those VSOs provide.
Thank you.
Not action items, just conversations. This feels a little bit like sledding uphill, but I'll do it anyway. Food insecurity, it's certainly an issue in Ellensburg, and I know it is throughout the county. So I know that we've talked and various groups have worked in this space, but I feel like there's still an opportunity for local governments to play a larger role in finding solutions. I know that the providers in this space may be struggling financially as well, so I think the problem doesn't go away. So I just put that out there. I know we've had some very, very preliminary conversations at the city level, and I think it most always comes back to the fact that we just don't have any money dedicated for that purpose, and general funds are what they are. So just put that out. The other one, and it isn't related in terms of funding at all, whether at county or the city, but I think as it impacts the community and the county, I think it's important that our elected leaders sort of get on the page or get on a page, if you will, when the conversation eventually or potentially maybe comes around to Medicaid cuts and what impact that could have on rural health care in Ellensburg and Kitata County, which, as we know, rural hospitals are greatly dependent on Medicare, or, excuse me, Medicaid cut, funding. That's not a local decision, but I think it's important that, you know, as cuts of that type would impact our citizens, our residents, it is a local issue, to me.
So I guess, and this might be more appropriately addressed through COG itself, but in the background, COG has been doing a lot of very constructive things and looking at a number of different projects that I think are aligning the city's and the county's efforts. And I think that that is, you know, absolutely something to be celebrated and keep pushing towards. But the underlying sort of premise for our COG was that it is a regional planning council. And we still haven't achieved that sort of critical mass and really embraced that idea yet. And again, I think that the opportunity for, you know, all of the cities and the county, in addition, I would also add that the, you know, junior taxing districts and, you know, various entities in the county probably play a, at least a, an intermittent role in those decisions, with the idea that we align our priorities, that we, you know, try to take advantage when, you know, there are opportunities in front of us and maybe regionalize those applications because that makes the most sense. And, you know, at the absolute, you know, baseline that we, you know, that we're not stepping on each other's toes and ruining opportunities that might exist. And I think we're doing that to some extent through the economic development efforts, and I think that that tone goes through, but I don't think we've really adopted that, the idea that we really should be planning as a county and not as individual entities, and that we do need to bring in the special taxing districts and things like that when those decisions involve them and give them, you know, a level of participation and a level of say in those decisions. So I just, I'll throw that out there, leave it on COG's plate, it's something we'll continue to work on, but, you know, a third of COG is sitting in the room, so there you go.
My addition that I think would be important, and this kind of goes back to what Corey was talking about earlier, and a little bit of what Rich was talking about, is energy production in our county. I think it's extremely important that every citizen in our county realize the importance of being able to generate our own energy source. We, if you're paying attention on a national level, international level, we have to start thinking about our own resiliency, our own redundancy, and we need to be able to ensure that we are making decisions and we are looking at opportunities that ensure that we can be self-reliant when the time comes, because it will be needed, it will come. It's not even a question of if, it is a question of when. And so those are things that I think are really important. So I know that that might be an infrastructure-to-death question, but it's something that's important.
So at the risk of needing a sack lunch for our next meeting, two items come to my mind. The first is funding of recreational facilities. I know that the city has been working their way through that and has approached the county about participating in those, in those projects. The upper county is also going, going through their own work with this for a facility, and there are some legal means in place in state law to fund something like this. So I think it's a, it's a germane conversation. And the other one is our airport. Though it is administered by the county, it has a direct link with the city in terms of its economic impact and also the utilities out there. Thanks for bringing the energy piece up. It is served by the city of Ellensburg, along with the PUD and PSE, so we have to work our way through who's doing what out there. But the utilities out there, while sufficient for the moment, if we are to have any commercial expansion of any note whatsoever, they will need to be expanded, and we do need to figure out how to pay for that and also to fulfill some of the obligations that I think the county has taken on in the past in terms of agreements. So I think that will be another one. We may need a series of meetings for all of this, not just one.
Okay, well, thank you. Appreciate it.